One of the cities.
Sorry.
You guys always get tangled.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Great. Well, thank you. We've got a full house here tonight. This is exciting. All right, so we'll get started here. We do have quite a few things on the agenda this evening. I think everybody's noticed. Public hearing, we've got a board of assessors meeting. For those of you there. Waiting on liquor license renewals and stuff, we usually try to move that up, but we'll get through our assessors meeting and make you wait a little bit. So apologize. So with that, we do have a public hearing. I'm going to call a public hearing to order. For an application for an on premises license. This is for Lincoln County Community Theater and Orchestra. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on behalf or any questions or comments on? The application for on premises license for that venue. Hearing none? We're good?
I'm good.
I know you're not saying anything good. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. And on the application for on premise license for Lincoln County Community Theater and Orchestra. With that, I'm going to call the Board of Assessors meeting to order for September sixth for Town of Damariscotta. We've got that in our dock and I think we have someone here. Ed, you want to come up and? You ready? Come right up and yeah, we'll get you right in the hot seat here. So, yeah.
Yeah.
They want to grab the minutes first or?
Yeah, we can. Yeah, we want to get that away while I was getting ready. So I believe Josh pointed out, there was only three of us sitting here for the minutes for that meeting.
So I'll make a motion to approve of the minutes of where it's July nineteenth.
Thank you, Josh. Tom's going to second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, the three of us and then we're going to, you guys are going to stay and you guys weren't here, right? So. Got that, Linda?
Yeah.
All right. Awesome. Okay, we'll get that out of the way. Some housekeeping and we can move on. I believe there's some abatements we need to. Go over. Yeah.
Yeah, I asked Ed if he'd be willing to stay just in case there was any questions on those. But one abatement and a few supplementals.
The one abatement, there's, there's an abatement for twenty twenty four. And there's, there will, there's another, you have the two year, the other two year abatement. For Dodge, Joe Dodge and Chapman. Three point one acres were sold to a smaller lot. When that transfer was made a couple of years ago. The three point one acres were never removed from. The Chapman and Dodge lot. So the, I, I will abate, I would say abate for this year for that one. I, the assessors can't do that. The board of selectmen have to approve the other two years. And I would, I would recommend on that too. It was, it was an error. We were that. By doing that, we've assessed those three point one acres to two different people.
Yeah. Enough.
And the other, there's a list of corrections for, we'll call them LD two ninety for the property tax stabilization. That was a whole manual process and there were a few errors in data entry. Putting in the, putting in the amount. So we stabilized some taxpayers at the incorrect amount. The best way we, and this is a move in target because we still don't know. It's, it's a program that's no longer going to be in existence after this year. And we haven't, no experience on how to correct the problems that we made. So the best thing, the, the best thing that we've come up with is we abate the entire erroneous amount. And supplement the entire correct amount. So that gets everything, all the books balanced. And when we, when we submit the reimbursement request to the state. In November, by November first, all the numbers will line up and they'll have the right amounts.
Fair enough. Any questions for Ed from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve. All supplements and abatements as presented. Second.
Okay, so you're, you're going to do that in one motion?
Yeah.
Yep. I don't see why that won't work. Right? Okay.
Yeah.
Tom, your second is, okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Thank you. Do we have any? Anything else from you or reports or anything you need to bring to our attention or?
Not that I know.
Very good. Yeah. And anything before we? Move on?
I got, well, I have one question. When will we get reimbursed from the state on this?
As far as I know, after January first of twenty four. We have to submit. And they, they don't, the state apparently, I don't even think has the, the application form complete for us to submit to get the reimbursement yet.
That's quite a program.
Yeah. I think they were aiming for November for that form.
I think, yeah, I think we have to submit by November first.
Okay.
So that, I think as Rob was saying today. So yeah, this is, that was a bit of a rush to get all these abatements and things cleared up. In time for that. And then other than that, once. Once these abatements get processed, then I can also. Getting the bills out, new bills out to everybody.
That was my only question.
All right. Thanks, Ed. There's no more discussion. I'll. Entertain a motion.
I know. Yeah, sorry.
Do I get a pass this time on signing this?
On your side? We can, we can edge into it.
Okay.
There, yeah.
All right.
Andy, the housekeeping on that. It might not be on the official document. It'll have to be signed. So I'll make sure that's updated.
Yeah, I think for the future ones, we'll just put lines on there and then.
Yeah.
Cause I think there was one that came in that had. This might have been the one I tried to correct. It had Lou on it.
Yeah, I think there was some that had some old.
And the other one just had the line and so we'll correct.
In the future, you just want me to put two lines, sign and, sign and print?
Yep.
Yeah, I guess I don't know.
We'll figure it out. We'll figure it out.
You do the math stuff. We'll do that.
I did, but remember.
All right, that'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn as assessors.
All right, thank you. Andrea seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, and the meeting is adjourned. With that, I'll call the Select Board, Damariscotta Select Board Meeting of September sixth to order. If it pleases the board, I know we do have somebody waiting for a liquor license renewal. Anybody else waiting for? Yeah, okay, so. Don't mind, we, we might bump that up in the, unless you want to wait for another hour. No, you sure?
I, I am fine moving up the Damariscotta River House Liquor License Renewal.
So this is in official action items. One, this is the second one on five I, number two. So you.
I am making that a motion to approve.
Okay, Josh is making a motion to approve the Damariscotta River House Renewal on premise license renewal. I have a second. Dan's going to second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, you can go back to work. Yeah. Andy, as, as far as getting the.
Should be available. A little short staff tomorrow. There's only one person in the office, but probably by lunchtime.
Awesome. Thank you.
And do you want to just knock them all off?
Well, there's nobody, let's go, we'll go back and.
Yeah, Lincoln Theater's got Christine.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll go back and get us, get us in order here. At that point, we'll take care of the. Housekeeping stuff. So we do have some minutes to consider. Those are August. Andy, I think on the agenda, it says the nineteenth. I think those are the sixteenth.
Okay.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August sixteenth.
I'll second.
I have.
Yep, and Josh seconds. And.
I have. Yeah.
It says the sixteenth on, on this part.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why I just directed it in the motion to make sure we're on the same page.
Have to make a comment. There was a correction on those minutes about the speech at the Lincoln Theater. Let's see if I can find it here. It's on number nine. It said that the Lincoln Theater was a packed house. That's correct. However. Smokey McKean. Brendan. Parsons. And Sarah. But Gadoo are the speakers.
Yes.
And so that needs to be added. And then when the next sentence says Chip Auger from Atlantic. Aqua Farm spoke. That was at a meeting for. A licensing, a licensing request that he made to this DMR, the meeting that was held here at the town office. So he didn't speak at the theater. He spoke at his licensing meeting. With the DMR in this office.
The names again of those.
Yeah, the first one is Smokey. McKean, M C K E E N. And the second is Brendan, B B R E N D A N. Parsons, P A R S O N S. And Sarah.
Glado. Glado. G L A D U.
Okay, so we've got a motion right now for, to move the minutes as is. So we need.
I rescind my second, rescind your motion.
Do, yeah, we can do it that way too.
I have something else to add. That under Pumpkin Fest, it says Andrea's case said there definitely has to be more advertising. But so. I said. I did not say that. I said there should be less advertising because I'm terrified at how many people we already have. So I didn't say there should be more advertising.
Yeah, I was a little surprised when I saw that.
I'm under, under part six. B Pumpkin Fest, it said that there definitely has to be more advertising. I'm quite sure I was horrified that we were going to be in USA Today and.
I remember you saying that.
Like, do we really need more people? Sorry.
Okay, so we have. Yeah, at this point, Josh rescinded his second. I rescind my motion. Yeah. So we have, Tom has a correction or an addition. Andrew, you have a correction or addition. Okay, either one of you guys want to move on that or make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept our two amendments to this. To the minutes.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that. Any more discussion? Good. Okay, all those in favor? All right, so I would remind everybody, yeah, if you do have any suggestions on the minutes. I think we can. Get those up before the meeting or do you want them coming?
He's standing, but we need to make sure it's on the record.
In here, yeah.
Actually motioned here. So I think it's just as easy to bring them with you to the meeting. Make the motion here so it doesn't get lost in between.
Yep, that's fine. I know we have to make the motion here, but I don't know if you want to get them in. It's, you know, so we can see the, them first before present. So, yeah. Fair enough, whatever works. All right. Let's move down through. We have some financial reports, three payroll warrants, eight, nine and ten.
I'll move eight, nine and ten payroll warrants.
Right, thank you, Josh. Here's a second. Andrea's going to second on that. Any discussion? Those in favor? Hey, payroll, everyone's going to get paid. They're going to be happy. And we have one accounts payable warrant, number eleven. I'll move number AP eleven.
Second.
Yeah. I, I don't know who got that one. Tom, Tom said it, so.
It doesn't matter.
Tom, Tom's going to second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, motion carries. So we'll move on. Number three on our agenda here for citizen comments and general correspondence. Do we have anybody in the? Nobody in the audience? No questions back there in the corner that need to be asked? So, all right. Do I, can I? Want me to point you out or you just want to stay there quietly? I won't die. All right. No, no, because if I do, I'm going to make you come up here and, and tell us who you are. So I said, all right, good enough.
Now, why are you all hiding over on that side? They're all lined up over on the.
I guess it's, yep. We're under observation here, everybody. So Andy, anything come in that in between the agenda now that? An unsnail mail? So, and I don't see any hands up on Zoom. So, all right, let's move on. Town manages report. Nothing happened the last few weeks? We're good?
Um, yeah. Put a copy, if you hadn't seen it, a copy of the newsletter that went out this weekend. Didn't get one out in July and. I guess this one technically, I think went out in September now, but just kind of recap with the summer and a couple of things to look forward to.
Yeah.
Um, other than that, for capital project updates. The contract for the Hodgson Streets executed and to be completed, we did do a minor. Change to the date was November third and extended to November fifteenth, which is consistent with. The timeline for the DOT to finish paving. And that was at the request of the contractor for a little more time. They asked for, I think, November thirtieth and. Just stuck with the DOT. Spec on that or timeline. So still to be completed this before winter, Lord willing, before the snow falls. Parking lot, just waiting on, just send an email to data yawn from right pierce, just to make sure that we're still on track to have bid specs put together. This fall, so we can put things out to bid, but eager to get a timeline kind of ironed out from them. And so we can work on outreach with the. Business owners, property owners and other stakeholders downtown.
We were all ready to do it, what? Two years ago and all right, so it shouldn't be too hard to pull together.
Right, so they just need to go through and remove the permanent wall and the sidewalk that was proposed to be built. Just a couple of things to remove.
Yeah, shouldn't be much of a change. Yeah, right. I have, there's been. Folks are paying attention to the newsletter, which is, which is awesome.
Yeah.
And I have had some folks downtown approach me about the parking lot recently and, and you know, the obvious concerns that we know. And I make sure that they know that this is going to be, you know, keep, watch the newsletter. You know, this is going to be a process once we get into the.
Right.
The how we're actually doing this and, and but, you know. So people are paying attention, which is good, good.
I'm happy some, what I'd like from our engineer, just a better sense of what they envisioned for a timeline. And, you know, whether we're able to get everything out for bid by, to say, December. Might be the difference between starting the spring or not. So I just, I want to have that, you know, a little bit better flushed out from them, what they're envisioning. And then invite folks in to talk about. The concerns they might have. How do we mitigate the, I mean, the parking challenges, flow of traffic through there. It's going to be a balance between. Trying to get done as fast as possible and still hearing and trying to find solutions that mitigate their concerns for parking. So.
But we are still keeping the area where people can sit and look and walk. That's staying, right?
During construction?
No, no, I mean, once that project is all finished. It's going to look similar to what it looks now.
Right. Yeah, there's not much changing.
Our, right, we're not losing our.
No.
Picnic tables or we might try to plant some trees instead of having dead ones there.
Potentially, yeah, just sort of focusing on the, you know, the, the living shoreline aspect has been removed from the, from the funder's perspective. So. We're going to focus only on getting the project from EDA's perspective complete. And then whatever's left, we can talk about, you know, if there's money available at the end of the project, local money available still. We can talk about improvements if that suits the board. So once they're done with the.
Okay, how about we tell them? When we want to put this out to bid and they meet a timeframe goal.
Sure.
Finally, sure. Why don't we do that?
What's your, which, what's the board's?
We'd like to put this thing out to bed so we'll be ready for construction as soon as possible.
Asking what?
When do you want to put it out?
Can we back it up from when the date, if you're looking at a fall, I mean, a spring?
Right.
And we should be putting it up for day.
Soon, soon.
Right, so once they get the bid specs all put together, then like, my understanding is they'll put the RFP together. I'm pretty sure EDA wants to just kind of bless what we're putting out there.
Yeah.
And that. Hopefully is a couple of weeks turnaround. I don't know exactly how long and how much time they need, but that's just a little extra part there.
Yeah, so you're getting any entity in the middle. So once the engineer finishes there, but they've got to get a DDA and that's going to be the holdup there where we can't, obviously they can't predict.
Right. I don't think it needs to go to a committee. It just, I think it's just a quick overview, make sure it's consistent with what they're funding and have agreed to and.
Oh yeah, just tell them our goal is to.
Have it out for bed so we can. Mid October. Can we have it out for bed by mid October? No.
I don't know if I don't have specifications finalized at this point. It's a month away.
So, yeah, let's just get it moving. Tell them our expectation is we'd like to put it out to bed by December first. How's that sound?
I'm assuming the goal is construction starting spring.
Yes.
Expectation is that we finish by spring of twenty five. From the funder. So that, that's the end of the five year period that we're allotted.
So, yeah, they've had more.
Yeah, I shouldn't have much, you know, much changes on their end to get it adapted into the new scheme. So.
Any other? Questions, comments, guidance on that? Church Street, Church Street Hodgson Street Project, working with Coastal Rivers Conservation Trust to get that DOT grant. Put together and submitted by the end of the month. Looking to partner with them on their project, which is to put a handicap accessible trail from Round Top Farm to Belvedere Road Farm. It strengthens the application as a DOT funding, trying to connect communities or people to different parts of our community, you know, and with the. Numerous service providers, store, grocery store, access to some healthcare options. I mean, I think making that all one project. They've got the twenty percent match. We get the twenty percent match for what we're believing the cost will be at this point. So. We're just going to work together on getting that, that put out. I'm hoping by the end of this week to get letters of support sent out. And for folks to. Draft on our behalf and go with the application. So. At this point, their engineers are just working through their design to be able to create some sort of passage underneath Route one. At the river there. And so that's kind of one of their big ticket items. For cost. And so they're just trying to make sure that's finalized and. From a preliminary design perspective, and we need them to kind of identify whatever environmental permits are needed so we can. Include that in the paperwork for the grant. So we meet with them again next Wednesday and their engineer, who happens to be someone from Gretel Andorski. So at least, you know, we've had them working on our end of it. And so hopefully there's some.
Well, that's, that's nice for consistency.
He's there, yeah.
Both ends of it.
Right.
Tie it together. So the engineer, that can go on the state and everything.
Nothing on the state. The good news, did meet with Stephen Cole, who works in the planning division for DOT, lives in town. Met with him last week and if awarded, one of the obligated, one of the things we have to have is this project needs to be included. In the state's transportation infrastructure program, being that it's not on a state road, it's not state infrastructure. We asked the question, if awarded. Could it be? And just with the, and they said they'd be willing to do that with a simple MOU that it'd be our project, we manage it, we administer it. They'd be willing to consider including it if awarded.
Oh, okay.
So that was good news. That was a big.
Yeah, that's good news. Keep that talking along. So.
So it is a stretch now, but we're going to do it our best effort.
Yeah, we're pursuing it. Thank you. Yeah.
Main power options. I was, I needed to learn what, what they are. They're a nonprofit entity that helps negotiate. Better power prices. We're a member of them. And they had reached out. We've got some of our accounts are on the standard offer, which means the contract, I think that on some accounts ran out last year. Some are about to run out. And so I'm trying to get all of those in on an offer. So they're not all on standard offer. There's a pretty big difference in price. I think even today, there was emails going out from CMP or, or some entities saying that there's different rates, I think. Um, different rates, I think, with the tie temps and the expected demand in power usage, that there, I think, be a fluctuation in pricing. Um, so it's be important to try and get that, um, offer renewed and get all of our accounts on that. Um, so I'll be working with them to, um, solidify that. Um, and that's the major items.
All right, many, uh, questions, comments on? Let's get some progress going along. Just keep them, yeah, keep pushing them, Andy. Thank you. All right, um, well, we can move into, uh, we have some official action items left on the. Agenda here, um, so we do have a. Application for an on premise license for, uh, Lincoln Theater. Everybody get a chance to take a peek at that?
Yeah, yes.
You know, if anybody has any questions, comments, I'll, uh.
Dan just had something he didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, I was.
Christina's here.
Yeah, hi Christina.
Sure.
Come on up.
Yeah, come on up. I'll get you to introduce yourself in the mic so all the folks listening all can.
Hi, I'm Christina Bellner from the theater.
Sure. So, so, um, I was just looking through the, the application and I'm fairly new at these things, just reading them and. Um, and it looked like, um, the intent is for Lincoln Theater to be the applicant, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because, um, because it indicates, because Lincoln Theater must be like a five oh one C three, are they a nonprofit? Okay, and that would be a nonprofit corporation?
Yep.
So in it, I think the way it's completed is it's not, it's sort of completed as an individual. So it's kind of in your name, so that it's, the applicant is the sole proprietor you indicated. And you also said that the, um, the application is not a corporation. I think it is a corporation, and I think that was the, your intent.
Okay, so I, in all honesty, I had looked, we had an, um, liquor license a number of years ago. I believe it expired in twenty fifteen. Okay. And so I did pull the past paperwork and took the information that they had used previously, um. But I certainly can.
Did you, uh, ever hear from the state? Was there any record that the state? Caught the same issue and?
No, we had the liquor license and then at that time they just didn't renew it. The theater, there weren't any issues with it.
Okay, but that is the intent anyways. It's.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
So, do you think that it should have said Christina Bellner acting as CFO or?
Well, yeah, like number eight, you know, this, this business, it's a corporation.
Correct.
It's not an individual. And then number nine, it says, it indicated not applicable licensee applicant is a sole proprietor. Um, it's not, I mean, it's a, it's an organization, it's a nonprofit.
Right, a nonprofit organization.
Okay.
Anyways.
So we want to approve it based on changing that, or you just want to leave it alone?
I say we leave it alone.
So this is probably falls in, when we asked the state previously, there was one about a corporation coming in, the, the ownership needed add up to a hundred. Or it was fifty one or less than a hundred. And so when I asked the state about it, it's something that they'll do a further review, you know. Deeper review on, told us that our nicely, that our purview is really, um, just making sure that locally it's acceptable to have. That happening in that location, it was really the, the rest of the application they let me know was for them to review, but it's worth just noting it and. Um, before you submit it, just making sure that it's not a problem.
Yeah, absolutely.
A lot of moving parts to.
There's a different application for an NGO versus a sole proprietor.
Right.
I don't know.
I don't know. My plan, if it were, was approved, was to bring it to the state and speak with them about it. Uh, so I certainly could ask them any of the questions.
Yeah. And, and so this is, so it's interesting. So Lincoln Theater just hasn't had a liquor license for.
Yeah, we haven't needed one because for most of the events, we've had caterers come in to do it. Um, and we, caterers are so busy now, which is fantastic. Uh, but it's harder to get them to do it, and we have just some special events where we would like to offer it. It wouldn't be something that would be. A regular concessions item, at least at this point. Um, and so the thought with the board and myself was that it would be, you know. Beneficial for us to have our own license.
Okay. Yeah, and you're just talking wine and beer. You're not talking.
Just wine and beer, yes.
That's what it says.
Yeah.
Just wine and beer.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, the answers. Yeah, those get, they get confusing. There's a lot of moving parts to some of these applications. So, yeah. As long as it satisfies us at the local end and if the state says anything, yeah, so. You want to continue to, I'll make a motion, I, I, yeah, unless you wanted to take it, you know?
No, I'll make a motion to, to approve the, uh, liquor license for, uh, Lincoln Theater.
All right, there, a second.
No, second.
Josh, maybe Andrew, Josh, we'll get that. Dan, Josh, uh, oh, uh, sorry, um, any discussion? Those in favor? Okay. There you have it, yeah. And when you?
Uh, if you want, we can, we can process that. I don't know if you want to ask the question of the state first before you send in with their signatures, or if you want to get it amended, modified. And then have us sign it.
So if, if it's okay to sign it, I was going to just bring it there and hope that I could talk to somebody about it since it was brand new. Um, and I don't know if there's anything else they'll need for me, so if I could pick up the paperwork. As soon as it's possible, and then I can just bring it there. And if there are any changes, I can certainly bring it back.
Yep, we should be able to get the click, um, on that before lunch tomorrow or by lunch tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good, all right. And we can move on. We have, uh, we have a bunch of these tonight, so, um, also have.
We did River House.
Yeah, we'll skip over to, we already did the River House, I know. We did, we did, River House, we did, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's unanimous, yeah. Um, so we didn't, yeah, we did number two, so, uh, we have, uh, three, which would be, uh, CLC YMCA at Lincoln Theater. Or a one day, um, on premises license, so.
So, so if.
I know.
So if you had it already, they wouldn't have to apply for it.
Correct. Um, they have an event, uh, on Thursday the fourteenth. And I had told them I had absolutely no idea what state our application would be at, and so they decided to put in a temporary. One-time event.
Cover all bases, so, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the CLC YMCA one-day event.
Thank you, Josh. Tom's gonna second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. And then going further down, we have an entertainment license to consider for Lincoln County Community Theater and Orchestra.
I'll move the license for Lincoln County Community Theater and Orchestra for the entertainment.
All right, I'll second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, we get a lot going on, yeah. Okay, so moving down, um, so this was, um, I think it was all in our packets. If we look at, uh, we're on to what, uh, three? Um, did we get a chance to look over the AOS ninety-three restructuring plan? So we're not going to go into the details of the restructuring plan tonight. That's not our purview tonight. They've asked. For board representation from, uh, affected towns, um, it's kind of a last, a little bit of a short notice there coming up for next week. But the discussion that, um, we need to discuss as a, as a, as a board is. Uh. Whether or not we're, you know, we have quorum if we're going there, or we're gonna do representative. So I, I guess I would ask. Everybody that, you know, um, this is next, what, the fourteenth at six o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh. I would like to, I think it would be important for at least.
Well, I think the, but the people that have children would be more important if they could attend.
Well, it's, there's a lot of tax money involved, stuff too, so.
I think everyone needs to be.
I might not be there because of my, my children, so, yeah, they're gonna be too busy.
So, so the, 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 the way this story, obviously, we have forum, um, we have to call for a special board meeting. At that date, at that location, um. And then we'll advertise it and we'll, we'll actually have open a board meeting there and, and, and move on. So that would be the, the question I have to the board members is.
Okay.
Want to be there as a, if we're, it's three or more. So if, if three of us want to go, then we'll, we'll, we'll entertain a motion tonight to call for a special board meeting for next, next week.
Well, I think we should.
Yeah, so I, 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 I definitely will make it there, um, so as long as we have, if it looks like we're gonna have a quorum, we'll, we'll, we'll make.
Yeah, I intend, this is a big deal.
So there's, there's at least three and then.
You gotta, you gotta.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, all right, so I'll, I'll make a motion to call a special board meeting. For September fourteenth at six P M. At the Coastal Rivers Conservation Trust, D N B Education Hall on the Round Top Campus. Do I have a second? Andrea's gonna second? Okay, uh, all those, any discussions? Okay, all those in favor? All right, unanimous, so, okay. Yeah, there's a lot going on with this and, and be interesting to see, you know, we'll, we'll save any discussion until we. We get there for the, for the meeting, but, uh, yes, please, please, so.
And that eight pager that was included in the packet is what they presented or shared publicly last April, I believe it was, or sometime this spring. Um. So just giving you an idea of what they, that's what, um, Peter Nielsen had shared when I followed up if there was anything they wanted to do. All the, you know, because they have seven towns in the, in the AOS ninety-three that have been invited, um, the boards have been invited to attend.
All their boards have been invited to attend also, right?
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that, everybody, so hopefully they're getting representation, so, yeah.
Hopefully all the other towns do what we do.
Have they done any technical projections on this?
Um, I don't know. They have a timeline. They have a timeline in here. I, I assume they're still largely in the discovery phase.
Yeah.
You on this board, Andy?
And that includes, no. Sorry, no. Um, and included in the discovery phase was identifying financial savings governance model.
Right.
Um, I don't know. You know, to your.
We'll find out when, uh, through.
Yeah, and I guess these are the kind of questions, yeah, so, yeah, because I, I think, yeah, this is that, the packet that was sent out is the only briefing material that I think everybody.
Reading it, it's, it's pretty straightforward to assume there are gonna be significant saves.
Yes.
Yeah. All right.
But it's gonna be a lot of controversy about.
Well, that too.
So we'll, uh, so that's good. So we'll have some board representation. We think it's important for next, uh, that, that meeting next week, so, okay. And, uh, we'll get that, town, we'll get that out and advertise, put it on the website or whatever. So it is, it will be a regular board, uh, special board meeting, so. Um, all right, we can move on, so. This, and remind me on this one, we, we've got the property tax abatement back on, or we moved it as the, the, the board of assessors, and then we've got to address it again.
So the one.
Get tied, tied up on these ones.
Sure, so the one, uh, that you as board of assessors approved was for this year's tax commitment. Uh, the two tax years that are before you as select board members are because, uh, the abatement request was. Um, for something that was done in, in error or illegality or, um, forget the other one, um.
Sounds like it was just error, wasn't it, Andy?
Irregularity, illegality or error, um, and so because the, it was double taxed. You know, if it had sold and that other property was never created as a tax bill, it'd be different, but. Because both existed and they didn't reduce that acreage, it was, we'll consider it an error, um, in tax, it was double billed. Um, and so because it was beyond the hundred eighty-five days, it needs to go to the select board. Um, and because it was this error and illegality, it also puts it in front of the.
So I couldn't remember why we had to move it. We moved it there. I was gonna ask you earlier, but we just, I'll just interrupt the meeting.
Yeah, same issue, just, uh, same, you know, legal aspect of it requires the select board to do this.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the property tax abatements as an illegality, error or irregularity for tax years. Thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three for our account three zero seven.
Second.
Andrea's seconds, any discussion? Those in favor? Motion carries, do, 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 do. All right, anything else on official action? I think they've, nothing else snuck in there? Um, so, uh, you want to go into, um, at this point, you want to talk about the, uh. Changes provider agency stuff, um, trust everybody, we've talked about that a few times and, um. So we're moving on to.
We couldn't sleep one night.
I'm gonna find it, and it's a great question. I'm.
Like the last three pages.
To be down, back there somewhere. Yeah.
Changes to the, uh.
Seventy-one, is that provider agency policy?
Yeah, so the changes, um, yeah. I'm highlighting, um, and raising, uh, really just comments. I've, I've been through one budget cycle for the town. Um, and so when, I've only seen it happen once. We've already had people asking, what's the process gonna be next year? When's the due date? Um, because a lot of these agencies will, will set up tables, um, on election day in November. Knowing that there's usually a few hundred people that come and vote, and so it's a good way to capture what they know to be residents of Damascada. Um, and, and they're captive because they're walking out that door there. And so, um, given that, and I think it's important that we try and. Get this maybe done in October, ahead of that, depending on the changes, it may or may not change how they, um, proceed getting petitions or whether they need to. Um, the other issue we had is just consistency. And how do we tell certain agencies, here's your process, and others will, this is what you're gonna continue to do, knowing that. We don't, you know, when a staff are saying, it's hard to answer why some would do it this way and others.
The same.
Well, that's what we're, I, that's addressing it now.
Just asking it to be addressed now. I'm not, not sure how it got there, just, I mean, there's really.
Yeah.
Two, two entities, I think, the library and LCTV that, um, are, they're just in there, um, automatically.
They never have to reapply.
Um, not through the petition process and, and not, they don't provide all of the documentation that's in the policy to be required, so.
Yeah.
Um, and then the other issue we've got in the policy that's written is those bringing a petition, it says they must provide us details in, in those items. About their organization, how many served, um, but if they bring you a petition with ten percent of the registered voters. Um, or ten percent of those that voted in the last election, um, you're obligated to put it on a warrant. And you can't require them provide you all of that information. I mean, you can ask for it.
Okay.
You can encourage it, but if they don't provide it, they're still on the warrant.
Okay.
Um, and so I think it's more, and another piece that was in there is it does say that the, um, the board of selectmen on an annual basis will set a cap. Of the amount of money dedicated to provider agencies.
Right.
If you're bringing it forward by petition, that's what goes on. You don't have an opportunity to, to lower it. The voters will decide based on that warrant. And what they came forward with. The other ones, the other ones coming forward. That don't need to submit the petition, and this is where it got even a little more weirder. In two thousand and ten, the board at the time voted all. Agencies would come forward, um. I believe with the petition and not to be assumed to be included, and that was just at a meeting. The policy was never redrafted from what we can tell. And so we just want to try and clean it up, understand how the board wants agencies to submit. Um, every town does it a little bit differently. Some just treat it, you know, submit it by January first and. Tell us the need and how many of you've served, and a lot of them just send standard, just letters out saying that. We just got one today from an agency that we haven't had before. Um, saying we had this many residents, here's the dollar value of the services we provided, and we're asking for X amount of dollars per person. Served, um, from your community for next year. Um, it could be as little as that, you could still have it be all petition, um, and so that's what I've put forward. Um, did try to give you a sense of the last five years, you know, what the dollar amount is.
Yeah, that was helpful.
Um, showed you what that looked like, um, relative to the total operating, uh, expense the town had. Um, different from what's levied from taxation, but the total overall expenditure, um.
So to jump into Lincoln County, uh, news thing, uh, how much of that was, is associated with the recording?
None, none. None. Um, so we, um, with LCTV, it's not a contract, but, uh, you know, they'll come in and provide the. Audio recording and manage the IT aspect of our meetings, and then they'll do the digital editing and. Um, so them being here, staff is about, is a hundred dollars a meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and that's separate from the request that comes in, um. So that's listed there.
So the history on the LCTV one was. They get, the revenue comes in from the franchise fees. So it's just trying to give back the franchise fees to go back to the operating budget. But as I understand that for cable franchise fees in their request, uh, not. Kind of aligning anymore, getting, starting to get close, so.
And that's largely just because, uh, in, in some part over the years, they've asked a little more, but again, because the revenue was showing that we had more coming in than what was being provided to them. Um, but as more and more people go for streaming services, they're not buying cable, which is where you're getting that.
Yes.
You start to see that fee from, and so you're seeing a decline in the franchise fee revenue, um. And so that, that's just one, one entity, but, um, so kind of presented, I think, three options. Um.
You're recommending two, I assume.
I'm not recommending one, any of them right now, um, I think. I don't know if the board would, you know, want input from the budget committee, uh, if the board feels comfortable proceeding with any one of those three right now. Um, that was one of my recommendations was to, you know, see if the budget committee wanted to weigh in, just to have more, um. I think some of them were involved in previous versions of this, um. But to either require all agencies to submit a petition, uh, require all provide agents or. Require all provider agencies to submit a request similar to department requests, um. Or you could, uh, just not accept funding requests from provider agencies. Um, there's kind of a little bit of a hybrid there. If you wanted to do something, what you, similar to what you have, I think it's just a matter of. Um, change in the requirement that a petition must have all those other items, which I, I noted in. The draft changed there, and then every subsequent year after, you could require them to submit as a department essentially. Um, they must submit all those documents, if that's what you'd like to have, um, you could require them to be at a public hearing. Um, to provide feedback answers, um. And so it's, it's just kind of picking what track you want to have on that.
I, personally, I like, you know, we, we did some little different last. I, personally, I like, you know, we we did some a little different last year. We had majority of them come in and and. You know, present and that was for several different reasons. That was nice for you to talk to some of the folks and understand what they do. Um. I like the idea of you have us running it through kind of the normal process. Because fitting into that budget is gonna be a lot easier for everybody working through the budget and wanting to fit it in there. Um. Is there a way that we could? I'm trying to think how you could do a hybrid one where the other thing too is getting input. Like I I don't, for me personally, I don't want to see the. Us five of the board have full control over who, you know, really the petition process is in place because they have to get public support first for that. Um, so there there would there be a way to get public support first and then. If that meets a certain criteria. Then bring it into the 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 budget, you know, the the uh, through the regular process, the, you know, through the line items and whatnot. Does that make sense? I just, you know, that's a way to keep the, um, because obviously we want public input for.
Right.
The board's trying to decide who gets what. It'd be nice to know if they actually have, you know, if they have full support. Going into it, it kind of steers us in a little bit of a direction to go, oh, everybody wants this. We better, we better pay attention to it, you know?
I think that's for the board to, I mean, your policy to kind of decide what level of support. Is is it ten percent of the number of voters who voted at the last gubernatorial election? Is it to, so you must attend a public hearing at this date? Um, I think it's, you know, how how do you gauge what the interest or support is? Um, because if they bring a petition, you've gotta put it forward.
It's gonna create some variability in how much the. The budgeted amount could be if people just. As opposed to the, the board and the budget committee saying. Well, we can, we'll do seventy five thousand dollars a year, let's say, as an example. And in all of the submitted things, they're gonna have to fall within that and somewhere within the process, it's a, the requested amounts are a hundred thousand, then.
Yeah.
Then it's up to the. The board and the budget committee to determine. Seventy five thousand and then allocate it accordingly.
Yeah.
I know that's more painful.
Get, get, yeah, no, I mean.
Then you have control over um, the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then if it doesn't work one year, you fix it for the next year.
Yeah. Um. And yeah, yeah, exactly. I don't know. And 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 my thoughts with at least having public input is like, you just making sure there was support, not necessarily the dollar amount. But making sure there was support there for that. Um.
So how would you do that?
But well, right now they do, they do the process with the petition. So that's how you get public support. And to Andy's point, you know, what is the, what are the, right now is ten percent. Do we change that? You know, there's a lot of, there's still a lot of questions. I was just throwing something out there as a. As an example of still retaining public support, but having control over the numbers to fit in the budget, you know, kind of a hybrid thing where we know. You know, okay, there's, you know, ninety percent of the town wants this provider agency to have this money. Well, that gives us something to, to guise us on something and. So to work that in, but.
So where it came from was. You know, our board is in charge of the operating budget of the town. It's not the operating budget of any non taxable, nonprofit. Agency. So if they want to get funding from the town of Damascada, then they need to go through the process of of a petition process. Board stays out of it and the townspeople decide.
Yeah. And that's what I like, having the petition still in place and then.
And then when, when it comes time for the, the annual town meeting, the warrant, we have a public hearing on the warrant, then those agencies show up and. Put their plea in. To get a vote from the.
Sounds good.
Residents of Damascada.
But but what if ten agencies all decided that they wanted to get ten thousand dollars and.
Then. That's up to the townspeople.
The budget committee and it comes to. No, I mean, that's what we would, that's what we're talking about. Happening to happen, right?
I I don't know.
You have a petition, then, then, then the p- the townspeople are saying they are in favor of this.
And it, and why should it be up to five of us si- sitting here to say, well, you're gonna get ten percent of what, seventy five thousand or you're gonna get five percent? You know, that's, let the townspeople decide. We've gone through this. From, I guess this is two thousand and ten and my name's on that. And I was here prior to that and that's why we came to that. Uh, this is an ongoing issue and this is the fairest way that we found was the easiest way. We're out of it as a board.
And so just as a. Point of clarification, it's not just the select board deciding, right? You've got a charter that says the. Budget committee will review the select board's recommendation and they'll provide their own recommendation. Doesn't need to be the same. It can be certainly be different, but. There's the budget committee as well, which is another public. Body that you've appointed. Um, so there's that second entity.
But.
It's just the challenge we have with the how it's written today. My biggest issue is there's a petition. Required, um, and then you've got no say, which it says you do, in the total dollar amount to be allocated.
Yeah.
So you can't have both.
Right.
Um, so you've got to pick one or the other so we can get this cleaned up one way, you know, and that doesn't matter which way, it's kind of how you want it.
To Josh's point, we want, you want public input, but at the end of the day, at this point, there is a fixed amount of money. You know, if if ten providers come in and request a hundred thousand dollars each. At some point, we're out of, you know, what do you, what do you do with that? So there, there has to be a check somewhere in there for, you know, a reality check somewhere.
There, there is a check. It's the voters when they go to vote on these.
Well, it is, but if the, if the budget's not, you know, if the dollar amount's not there.
The library isn't even in here.
It is.
Yes.
So we don't, this is the thing.
Now saying to the library, they're gonna have to go out and they will have to do the same things.
They used to. Well, they used to, and that's how, this is what, the point, this whole thing is consistency. Right now, there's no consistency to it. Um, and and we're trying to get to that point. So if you, if the budget committee, have you talked to anybody yet on that?
Just the chair.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we brought it up last year during the process of the budget process and and just said, hey, you know, we should look at this. And actually, I think both the committee and the select word at the time said. That's fine. And I said, well, I'm just saying, no, it's not. You know, we've got different rules for different ones and the policy is different from some of all of that. So I do think we need to give me some guidance and fixing it.
At the very least, it needs to be consistent. Whether we change anything, it needs to be consistent and needs to go back to one or the other. So that's the important thing. Okay, whether we, we stand pat or. Alright, um.
I mean, do you want to have it be petition in the first year? Do you want it petition for every organization every year? You know, I think what it was alluding to before was the, before the board voted in two thousand and ten. That was the first year you come with a petition and that shows the pu- the public support. Um, the following years, you could just submit without petition and then you you can require all those other items. Um, it's just, you can't, the ones that come via petition and you could set a policy that says you don't need a petition. Um, and you gotta come through this channel and they could still bring a petition. That's still the right. Um.
Yeah.
Um, and so it's, that's still an option, if you, if you pick a different policy.
But if you petition, you bring a petition on the first year and say they ask for five thousand dollars and then they don't have to have a petition anymore.
Is.
Automatically get the five thousand. What if they want ten?
They don't automatically get it. They just don't need to bring a petition for it.
So if they bring.
That's how it's written now.
So if they bring a petition for five and then two years from now, they decide they really want ten, then they have to do another petition.
Today's policy would suggest they need to, any increase would require. If they didn't come forward with the request, the second year. And then the third year, essentially, they wanted to get money again. It had to petition again. That's how it's currently written.
So you have a two year.
You need to submit your petition for the first, you need to continue the request.
And then the second one, you don't have to petition, but.
That's how it's written now. No, if you. You need to have funding allotted each year. You petition the first year, as long as you're consistent in your request and the dollar amount hasn't changed. You can continue to get it. You need to submit all the documentation that is in the policy. Um. It just goes again, goes back to that two thousand and ten vote, which is just of that board at that time and the policy was never.
Policy was never up.
Changed. And so I just again need to know, do you want every agency every year to do petition? You want something more than the first year, as long as you come in each year's, subsequent or following years for a request without a change. And provide the documentation. Is that okay? Is it just the first year? Is it every year?
I think at the very least, every, they, it should be petitioning every year. Um, you know, and making sure there's public support and whatnot and retaining that. Yeah. I mean, that would make sense to me instead of just doing it once and then not changing it. Yeah.
But. You're gonna. You're requesting it, it should go to petition.
Yeah.
But that way it's from the people.
From.
And yeah, that keeps that checking.
From the people.
Yes.
Yes.
The very least.
You cannot require all those requirements if it's by petition.
Oh.
You can encourage, you can ask, but you cannot require. They bring a petition, that's their right to be put on a warrant. We can decide essentially which warrant. Um, so if we set a date and policy when it needs to be submitted to the office by, so we can verify signatures and have time to get on the warrant for print and. Go with that. Um, hopefully it's complied with. If someone brings it in after the date we're asking for, um, it will have to wait until the next. Available presumably referendum votes. I don't think we'd want to impose another referendum vote outside of the June and November ones.
No.
Um, traditionally.
Cost too much money.
Okay.
And then that money is not budgeted.
Exactly.
Right.
It needs to be budgeted.
So when it comes to the budget and accountability, which is in your purview, um, in setting tax rates and in committing and. Um, do you want to bring some of that back um, into your, into the board and the budget committee's court and and have say in it? It sounds like. Sounds like it more jewelry is leaning more towards a petition process for every year. Um.
But the petition process would have to be completed in time for the budget committee and the select board to look at it. Could we require that?
No, well, you could have an earlier date, but I don't, I mean, someone wanted to challenge. I mean, if they, if you said it needs to be to us by February first.
Yeah.
You know, but we know we've got until middle of March to finalize um, and and have stuff and it provides us enough time to be able to get things printed. Um, I think we're. Close to sixty days before the election, we need to have the ballot to the printers.
Right.
I mean, every town that's going to electronic ballots now is coming to this pretty much one company. Um, so sixty days right now is kind of our minimum to submit.
Okay.
Forty five maybe, but then we sometimes get charged a expedited fee or something. So we need to work in my mind within that, so we aren't paying extra. Um, which. I think is reasonable to set something, but I don't think you can do it too soon. You'll end up potentially with someone kind of challenging us on. That why'd you wait till November? If you wait till November's election, now you've, Josh's point, now you've talking about the voters approving a dollar amount that. Isn't gonna go, it's all gonna come from fund balance personally at that point or supplemental tax bill.
Right.
Which.
Not a good idea.
Which argues for having a set amount, if you want to go back to that, right?
Right.
Control the budget side.
And that was, you know, for me, when I put those on there and looked at what was that as a percent of the total operating expense, they all hovered in those five years, right around two and a half percent. And I didn't know if that was something, you know, given that it's there, as our budget goes up, so do the requests from the agencies, not. Because, but it's just everyone's increased costs are going up. Um, you know, would you want to say, we, you can say, hey, we'll work within two and a half percent of the operating budget. Um, and that can get messy because you haven't approved your budget and, you know, until you're at the end, but.
Yeah.
It was just interesting to see that it's about two and a half percent each of those five years of your operating budget.
But the entities that do requests these funds are usually good about getting. The petitions in on time and.
Yeah, there was one last, yeah, two years gonna have. Last year that didn't have enough signatures and they, they had enough time to get more, they just never did return it. Some agencies.
Sometimes you have to work a little.
Some agencies stopped doing it just because of of the process. Um.
So if we require, yeah, if we change it, if we require the petition process. To be completed um, each year for the requested amount, that puts it out, the public support. Um, I, I think that's a good place to start, you know, we get to keep that consistent. Um, you know, as it is right now, it's been pretty, no, we've, we've, there's, there's some. Open areas there, so that's uh, it's not going too far on the limb, but. Um. I don't know, yeah. And maybe, yeah, I don't know what the, you know, we've heard from the budget committee, if they've got something similar, but. Uh, is that, I don't know if you need any official.
I'm looking for guidance. I mean, my recommendations were, uh, one to review these, it sounds, I think it sounds like, I mean, what I would do is I'd go back and. Refine or 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 redraft, you know, some of these changes based on what I'm hearing tonight. If you want, I can ask the budget committee. I wanted to get them together in October anyways, give them an overview of how last year ended, where we are in this first quarter.
Due diligence.
Bring this in front of them.
Yep.
Um, if I can do that, maybe before the end of this month even.
Absolutely.
Um. And and if you'd like, you can at least get their thoughts on what I'm hearing now is a petition every year. For all, not um, provider agencies or nonprofits.
Yeah.
Um.
I, I think it's important for them to show. For everybody, just to show public support. And that's, that's where they start. So, yeah, as long as, and that guides a lot of what everybody does, so.
And it comes from everyone's taxes, so they should have a say.
Yeah, and that's where we get, you know.
And the way that comes in to reach their own warrant article and else, like we did this year, they'd, they'd show up on the. The ballot is their own and you could approve one at a time or or, you know, it's not a lump.
Oh, okay.
So voting no on, on one is not for all. It's just individual requests would be the.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we define provider agency somewhere?
Um. Yeah. Not a definition section in there, but if you look at. Purpose.
Yeah.
And all social service, community service and other nonprofit agencies that request funding from the town is the purpose of this policy. Um. So I take that to be the, you know, the definition of who we're trying to capture. If we want to. You know, put a definition section in there, let me know.
Maybe we should. It's not a bad idea to have a, a, you know, you could use that definition, but then we'll have it, have it actually defined in there, so. I can get. Wishy washy sometimes if. As what dictionary you pull out, so, yeah.
I know we had uh, gone a little bit, you know, uh, last year talking about, well, C L C, I was like, well, C L C is an interlocal agreement. If, you know, six towns have agreed to. Share the cost of this service. That's a very different, they, you know, they're their own entity, but you know, we've already committed for five years, I think four more now, three more now. Um, to pay our, our equal share.
Yeah, that's a different, that's a service provided. Yeah.
Well, we're kind of an owner.
Right. It's a little different.
A little different. That does feel different.
Yeah, it's a different. All of the other ones that are on that list that I provided are are truly. There's no contractual or anything with any of them. It's truly a nonprofit or service provider or community service entity.
Mm hmm. Okay. Fair enough. Alright, I give you something to work off of. Alright, thank you, Andy. Alright, what else? Somebody gonna be gone somewhere?
I am, um, I was trying to get it back, so I'm going to a conference, um, October one through four. Um, not gonna be able to get back here in time. I'll be back that night, but not in time for the meeting. Um, and then it's pumpkin fest that weekend, so we'll have, I'll have my hands full with the public works engage, you know, um, engagement through that. Um, so just wanted to put out there and didn't know if you wanted to try and meet on the eleventh for the purpose of at least signing warrants. Um, and in. Just meet on the eighteenth, the full agenda.
And do the, yeah.
Or how you want to do that. We'll meet again. There's, there's only four weeks in October, so it's not.
Right, yeah.
It's a point in there.
We, we, we met on the eleventh and then.
But it might be prudent to at least have a, a house payable warrant to process.
Um, yeah, on the eleventh.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. Has anybody?
I'm not here. I might be here on the eleventh and may.
Well, as long as we have.
Have a very brief meeting.
Appreciated meeting, so.
It'd be the right, the five thirty that following Wednesday, if that would work, or a different day and time, if that's something the board wanted entertained.
Oh, we just let Cheryl take Andy's place and.
She offered. She said it'd be no more than thirty minutes, though.
Hey, we can do that.
We could. I mean, that's, that's for do it. If she wanted to build it, we've done it before and if it's just moving.
Yep.
Movement unless you want to be here, but if if.
I mean, it's typically prudent, you know, she's the treasurer, not the assistant.
Yeah.
Man, so I mean, so it would, you know, be a little.
But it'd be fun just to.
It's up to, yeah, it's your call, but I. But if you'd rather wait, yeah, yeah, I, 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 we could, you know, we could definitely wait till the eleventh and do it then, and then just do the eighteenth and go from there, so. Yeah, is that uh, agreeable to majority anyway?
Don't you decide?
Well, if we, if we push it to the eleventh, we did instead of doing the first or the fourth, the first Wednesday, it would be the second Wednesday.
Be the second and third.
Yeah, second and third. October eleventh instead of October four, fourth. Yeah. Want a motion? We need a motion to move that date? We do, because we've got it.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, so I'll make a motion to move the, our October fourth uh. Select board meeting to October eleventh. Uh, at five thirty at the town office meeting room. Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
Tom's gonna second. Any discussion? Those in favor? Alright, we got everybody. Okay, so that'll work and you won't miss any excitement.
Stays the same.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, nothing changed other than that, that date. The fourth is gonna change to eleven, so we'll get that out.
Changed a lot of things if he wasn't here, you know.
Oh, imagine what we could have gotten down to.
Pointed him in so many positions.
Thirty minutes to, you know, a quick meeting and.
Still can.
Wait till you get home. So, yeah. Awesome. Okay, that's easy enough. So it's gonna be, October's gonna be a busy month. There's a pumpkin fest and so. Um, and you're so you're you're meeting, uh, you. You want to give us a little insight on that?
Uh, the conference.
We need to.
Yeah, so.
Conference, yeah.
Um, International City Managers Conference. Um, there's about twenty-five to thirty managers from Maine alone going down. Um, I previously had gone before, um, uh, I think four, four of them. Um, it's it's a great event. Um, there's about the one year we were there, there was three thousand managers from mostly the U S, but representing many countries. Um, I don't know that they had. Wasn't every continent. I don't think there's anyone from Antarctica there, but um, uh, every other continent had someone there from it. So it's a really cool and they. Um, made it a solid effort, um, probably five or six years ago to kind of create a track for small towns because that was one of the big feedback. There's a lot of big cities going there and some of it just didn't. Really mold or fit well with small town challenges. And so, um, you know, they made an effort to kind of include the smaller states and the smaller towns um that are going there. So. It's really great. I mean, for Maine, have ten percent or so of its managers able to attend.
That's cool.
I've got a great cohort and it's, you know, the people I rely on when I got questions and, um, you know, but it's Sunday. Um, and the event, you know, goes right through Wednesday. There's stuff Friday and Saturday you can pay extra for and do more one-on-one coaching or special events, but. Um, quite a few don't typically go down for that part of it. Um.
But networking is important. Yeah.
It is. I mean, the vendors that are there, some of the ones that, you know, I've been talking to on some of the um things we're just keeping in mind, whether it's. You know, I was talking with one of them the other day about um accessibility concerns on website. Um, so E D A does have um some expectations that all of our service be provided. Um, and so some of those vendors that. Could offer that solution for our website, you know, like they'll be there and um so it's just kind of neat to kind of make those connections and. And have that familiarity with the folks when you have challenges or problems and things to work on.
So we'll expect you to come back on the meeting on the eleventh, just energize.
Yeah.
A little lightning fast ideas.
Yeah, but that doesn't work within our operating budget.
Great idea, Andy. So, yeah. All right. Awesome. Yeah, those are important to 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 do, keep up to date on everything. Now, best practices and whatnot, so. Uh, all right, um, you had one last discussion I want to run through with Belvedere, Egypt on material estimates. Yeah.
Excellent. Um, so you know, we've been talking about shoulder material. Uh, Daryl and Andrew and I, our engineer, met with um Hager Enterprise there a month ago now or so. Just to talk about it, we've talked about it at our board meeting. Um, the material's been applied, um, you know, but, you know, our engineer is kind of raising question with the total amount billed. Um, and what they were estimating to needed to be put down. Um, based on the specifications, um, just given that there is a gap, I'm just kind of looking for um the board's consensus that. Um, the idea being that we have Gartley and Dorsey go out and actually. Station the road. Um, Andrew had worked on state, what he calls stationing the road. Um, you know, sometimes every hundred feet or, you know, he's got this road station thing set up here in this chart. Um, so he just went through just based on our observation driving. Um, based on other photos, based on what was to be laid for asphalt surface in some of those areas. Um, an estimate of what he thinks it should be. Um, you know, with the credit applied for the reclaim section and the credit applied for the shim versus the mill. Um, he's coming up with um two hundred and sixty-four, two hundred and sixty-five cubic yards. Um, to thirty thousand dollar difference in price. Um, his offer is to have someone um go out in the field. Actually measure what the lift of the asphalt was, um, quantify what that would be at that station, if you will, um, two feet out. Um, and actually get a more accurate um accounting of what it should be, you know, based on the two foot width.
What did we ask for?
The two foot width.
And we need to, we're trying to confirm that we are getting what we asked for.
So, yeah, I don't think there's many areas where it's less than two feet, but there's areas where it's more than two feet. Um, and so I think it's just going back. We didn't have anyone on site that day. Um, I think it was two days notice when they were gonna put it out. Um, we didn't have anyone out there counting trucks, counting the loads. We talked about how do we verify? Um, when we had a conversation about what the original estimate was gonna be, it's just an estimate. Um, it was higher than that. Um, but we left there with an understanding that it would potentially be lower, potentially be as much, but we were all, I think, leaving that day on our side of it, thinking it was gonna be much lower than the original estimate. Um, so to get a a price back that was four grand off of that original estimate.
So this would be basically due doing due diligence.
Our due diligence, yeah.
It's it's a minimal amount of money to to do our due diligence. Your little projection, what, forty-five hundred?
Fifteen hundred bucks a day estimated at three days to go out and do the whole road. I think while they're out there, what I'd like to add is have them take the width of asphalt at those locations as well.
Is there any merit in ask telling uh Hager what we're doing? In advance and see if they have any.
Here we are. We've already sent an email back and explained our position and what we thought it should be, and this is where we are. Um, so I think our our only option, having no one in the field that day to count trucks and estimate, you know, per per load, what was in a load. I mean, it's usually about sixteen tons. Or cubic yards rather in one of those trucks. Um.
So why didn't we have someone out there?
Again, with two days notice, I mean, we didn't have anyone ready to go and we didn't. You know, green light to have the engineer out there at their rate. I wasn't able to go out. Our public works crew was out doing their thing.
You have to station somebody there and it's.
That's a very costly problem if we don't. If they do things that we are not ready to.
Right, which is why we're here today and I'm asking for your input on whether you feel okay with me saying, yes, I'd like to. Have Gartley and Dorsey go out and do it staff of the fact, but it's still part of the process of verifying.
No, so we're just, this is just asking to do the due diligence at this point.
Well, I think we have no choice.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, uh, but yes. I think going forward and other projects, when you got a million plus dollar project, I think you do need to afford a budget that puts someone out there, at least at certain parts of it. Maybe not every day, all day, but I think at certain major pieces, I think it is important that they know, any contractor knows that we will have someone out there.
Sure.
Um, things sometimes might go different and if there's issues that come up that day, they know they've got someone representing us. Um, that can answer it or say, hey, I need to reach out to and they know to to take that step. Um, but we didn't lay it out and afford ourselves necessarily that that we had worked with Gartley and Dorsey. They did do stops periodically. Um, but it was to check in on progress for the day. It wasn't like they weren't out there for a twelve hour day with with the contractor watching everything.
But I think you guys met with the contractor and Andrew would come up with some numbers and I think when you had your meeting, you felt comfortable coming out of that meeting that. You know.
It wasn't gonna be this high.
It's not gonna be this high.
Right. I mean, we know there's depths and along some of that before they did any work that was already washed out and needed material. Um, but, uh, you know, there's some pretty long sections in that, you know, needed maybe two inches. Um, and so when you look at the average depth applied based on what was there at five point five inches on average for the whole length. Um, minus the reclaim area. Um, it does kind of let us to wonder. I mean, and and it's not compacted at a rate in a way that they couldn't go in and. Measure it still, the depth.
They could.
Asphalt. It's easy enough for them to go do that.
Yeah, and they just didn't.
It's just time, you know, and.
And some areas are greater than two feet and aspect calls for two feet.
Right.
Not three, not three and a half.
Right. I mean, it's something if it required extra width because of the drop off, then we should have just been notified of of the additional width. Like it's a change order, right? We called for two feet. If they needed to, it's a change order to go to three.
Yeah.
Just need to communicate that to us, you know, we wouldn't be sitting here wondering, well, was it two? Was it three? Uh, what we know we can do is go out and two feet off the edge of asphalt and take a depth there. Um, if it's another foot beyond that, then we have another conversation about, you know, how did it get to be three feet instead of two?
Exactly.
So let's, yeah, I think we're all in agreement. Let's do a due diligence and.
Yep.
And get it checked out.
Never.
I agree.
So, yeah.
Okay, okay. Fair enough.
Yeah.
All right.
This is unacceptable.
Uh, do 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 anything else slide in there? That was all on the agenda? All right, I'll uh, well, I guess we can entertain any uh uh board members like the. Discussion item selection, the discussion items off. Tom, we'll start with you down there.
Well, just like to uh commend Andy. Uh, he was asked by the Newcastle Damrestata Rotary Club to make a presentation about activities in town. Uh, this Tuesday and he did an outstanding job and as a result, he's been asked to be an honorary member of Rotary at no cost. But I don't see a conflict with that, but I did ask him to speak with you about it, but I don't see any any conflict there if he wants to do it. I think Matt Lucas was an honorary member as well.
I think it's fine. Oh, another feather in your cap.
Good luck, another thing to do.
What? Um, Dan, any? So you like tonight?
Not a lot of excitement, but I I just I just wanted to follow up on uh work plans. That's something we're gonna see monthly. Um.
Sure.
I I wasn't sure because we because we did all that work last month and.
Right.
Yeah, we talked about. Discussion about trying to use it as a working document.
Right.
You'd come back with.
If you want a monthly basis, I don't, certainly not every meeting, but.
Yeah, if you want a monthly, we can bring it back every month. Just to show where we are on it and just see it and.
Yeah.
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 I think that's a great idea.
Keep it uh, keep it as a working document, right? Yeah.
Right.
One that wasn't on there, one that was on there for this week is a tentative benchmark was the first draft of a parking ordinance update, which didn't make. Um, did get the provider agency policy, which wasn't on there, but um, just need to meet with Jason and the parking enforcement folks and. Get that, get their input on that.
Sounds good. Andrea.
Well, I just wanted to say that Dan and I have been sitting in on the comprehensive plan housing committee. Well, we're sitting on many committees, but. Um, the housing one is moving along and it's very interesting what what's going to come out of it. For us to try to be proactive about doing something about it. So it's exciting.
Isn't, don't we have a um scheduled meeting with the folks from Lincoln County Regional Planning? Um, we had a tentative October meeting. I need to follow up. Um, being that, you know, probably just be the one for them to come to now. Um, I did meet with Kevin uh Southern, the interim manager in in Newcastle and Michael, our shared planner today about housing and. Um, I think coming out of the planning board in Newcastle, there was a recommendation that the select board there create a housing committee, but. Um, that it potentially be a two-town committee. And so we were talking about that and is right now the time to do that or not? And one of the things we had left with was. Proposing that Lincoln County Regional Planning come and present to both select boards potentially. Um, it may be in what could be a future two-town committee. I mean, the idea being that, you know. You know, both towns are trying to serve as the, you know, same opportunity for housing. Um, you know, with a lot of people working here. Um, or wanting to live here, so it's easy to get elsewhere, but you know, we're kind of in it together in a sense. Um, we're trying to solve the problem. Might have different ways of doing individually, but. Um, you know, trying to put our heads together and other way. So then what we were talking about was, do we want to have them come and present to both boards? Have it be a joint board meeting? I know you've expressed interest in trying to work together with the board, their board more, and I think housing might be a good place to. Come together and talk or at least your presentation, put something together for a joint.
We did, we talked about it too, so that I think so.
So that's that's where we left today. I don't know if the board would like to do that. I can work with Kevin to find a date that might work for both boards to come together.
Yeah, look into it, Andy. Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So we we had also talked about meeting with the Great Salt Bay District, um, because there, we need them to. To expand housing because we need to sewer and water.
We need the water and sewer expanded.
Yeah, so. Something sequencing.
By representative, you know, have a.
Maybe after this meeting with the the regional groups, then we can go to the next step and meet with the Great Salt Bay.
Have them come along, have it, have everybody there.
Yeah, good idea.
They couldn't be there.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe they should be there.
Put on an invite to them or something same. Yeah, work on dates and then then throw an invite out to them.
Right, maybe there.
We don't have anyone on the committee, right?
Which committee?
The water.
We have three members of our community that are representatives of Damrestata.
Yeah, they're elected, not appointed.
Lefted, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And we've got three Newcastle has two or three and Noble Borough, I think, has one.
One, just one in overall.
Maybe but no one from this.
No.
No, it's a separate elective position.
It's a different.
It's a, uh, Josh, anything on your end?
I'm just gonna stress moving forward with Hodgson Street when we do our construction project. As we see, we.
Didn't we see?
Keep an eye on things.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I agree. We need oversight on every project that we do.
Right.
Well, that's both. Significance.
A lot of the moving parts, so, yeah. Um. I won't add too much to it. I just, I'll like usually pass along, don't say much, but uh. Just observations that um uh. It's a busy, busy summer in town. August, uh, you know, was 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 seems like it was quite busy. September and a busy month. I hope, um, you know, everybody, all the businesses did well. I think there's a lot of folks around and. Lot, a lot of things happening. So it uh it looked like it was a very successful summer, hopefully for everybody. So we can continue through the fall and. Keep that momentum going. So Pumpkin Fest is coming up soon. Right around the corner. So we're gonna have a little bit of lull in the act and it's gonna be. Act again, but it's a good time, so we'll prepare for it. So.
We didn't do too good hay in.
Yeah, so. And yes, yeah, if you're looking for anything else than first crop, you're probably not gonna get it. So, yeah. Yes, yeah, weather wasn't really conducive for that. So, um, all right.
Pumpkin's big enough to be uh as worthy as last.
It's gonna be a little scary.
It'll be, it'll be a good turnout, just to say.
Uh, more, more people sinking.
Yeah. Uh, so with that, I'll uh, yeah.
And make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, Josh.
I second.
Tom seconds. Any discuss? Favor? All right, we are so adjourned. Uh, we do have, what do we have left that we have minutes to sign, right?